I'll be regularly scheduled. This is our meeting for Monday, February 7th. To order as well executive order and legislative action. This meeting is being conducted in high fashion. One of our members is is remote today and the public, the public is remote as well as some of our employees. So the first order of business is pledge allegiance. Charles, would you please leave?
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have two. Public hearing and that public hearing is to receive public comment on our affordable housing tax incentive ordinance. We have Karen Kravitz with us today. Not sure I see Pete yet. But there, okay. Where is he? He's must be still in his pajamas. There's no picture of him. Anyway, so both Karen and Peter are here. That's good. We've obviously already had at least one hearing on this and we had had a couple of other discussions about it over several board for the select meetings. So this is the most current version and why don't I leave it to Karen? Would you just mind giving us a little bit of a thumbnail on what what changed as a result of our last? Our last engagement on this?
So there were two outstanding issues as of our last hearing and those were. There was a question about whether it had to be forty years or whether it could be thirty years. And we were able to resolve that with the help of DOH telling us that thirty year. And if it was, if it was a set aside development, meaning it was a market rate development that has a certain percentage affordable, then it would have to be forty years. And for the purposes of the equivalent points for if the town wanted to have a moratorium, it would have to be forty years. But those are not issues that are important to us. So thirty years is fine. So we have worded it that it should be thirty years, forty years of or such lesser affordability period. As may be required by the Connecticut Department of Housing HUD or other applicable regulatory authorities. So that issue was resolved. The other issue which is related was that we had said the purchase price of a homeownership. Needed to be two point five times the area median income. And we can instead of having that set formula, we can use the same thirty percent of eighty percent of AMI. For monthly expenses, as long as the purchase price does not result in a family in a low income families mortgage being more. And other expenses being more than thirty percent of their income on a monthly basis, then it can be considered affordable. So those are the two issues that we resolved. We did have one request from to include utilities. In the definition of monthly expenses to be considered when calculating the thirty percent. So that resulted, which often the funders do include. So that resulted in a change in the first paragraph. One, two, three, four, five lines down where we had said excluding utilities, we would just take that out. And then in the definition of monthly housing expenses, which is section two A. Six, we would include utilities there as well, but not entertainment and cable. So. So streaming services and cable and that sort of thing would not be included in the calculation.
Thank you, Karen. Any questions from the board members at this point on those changes? Were there any others that would be satisfied? I don't recall.
I think so.
Okay, let me open this up to the public. First off, I'm going to recognize Chris Widmer. Chris, thank you for your assistance throughout this process. It was, it was Chris that brought this to our attention originally. Suggesting that we would want to consider this owing to the fact that some of our neighbors do exactly the same thing. So Chris, thank you very much for having brought to our attention. Those who are unaware, Chris is currently developing a affordable housing project here in town off of State Street. So it's a, it's a great hills, is it great hill, Chris?
Yes.
Wonderful. Chris, you've, we appreciate the efforts that you put in on this. Are you comfortable with this at this point? Does this seem to satisfy what a typical developer would be looking for in this kind of program?
For our purposes, yeah, it's great. And I think that, yeah, will help even our first two buyers. Their incomes are are sort of slightly below eighty percent or below eighty percent. And so it's a great formula for for easing them into a tax rate that seems to work for them and for the town. So I think it's a, I think it's a win win. So, yeah, thank you for for help, helping us put this together.
Oh, I appreciate it. We received, at least the board received this morning, I'm not sure when it came into the office. A series of questions from Larry Rizzolo, who is actually on the Zoom call this morning. Morning, Larry. Would you like to, I forwarded across your, your questions to Karen Kravitz as well as to Pete, Pete Barrett as well. So they have the benefit of it as well. Would you mind, would you mind reading your questions to us, please?
Fabulous, thank you, Matt. And I do apologize if these questions are naive, but I was looking at. The general statutes, chapter one twenty six A, section eight thirty G, and how it defines affordable housing. And it seems to be a little different from your definition in section one. They make a distinction between moderate income households, which are the eighty percent threshold that Christopher just mentioned. But they also mention a lower income household, which would be sixty percent of AMI. And according to the statute for a multi-unit development, thirty percent of the units would have to be. Divided fifty fifty between the moderate income and lower income. But in the tax ordinance, I don't see any distinction there and I don't know how that necessarily applies. If the developer, the owner of the development, has a certain percentage of moderate and a certain manage percentage of lower income households. Is that prorated? How, how does the tax abatement work in that circumstance? And the second question was thinking about the rationale for this abatement. The requirements of the statute don't apply if the housing stock in Guilford exceeds ten percent. Affordable as defined by the State Department of Housing. And how close are we to that percentage? And so how important is this abatement as an incentive? And in that line, it seems to me it would be morally desirable to have. A greater abatement for the lower income houses, family to, you know, encourage that development. And the last part was related to the development near the train station that was. In a sense approved some time ago, but there's been no progress on it. And does this tax policy that we're discussing today, is that going to help that along? Or are there other larger outstanding issues related to that? So those are the three questions. The definition are how close are we to the threshold where where this becomes moot? The definition question and how about the, the development near the train station?
Larry, thank you very much for the questions. I'll take questions two and three. In terms of the percentage of housing stock, we're somewhere north of two percent, maybe two, two point four percent. The, the term affordable housing is very, very restrictive. In order for a property to be deemed affordable, it has to be deemed restricted for same purpose. So I would offer to you that there are, there are at least, at least one large condominium association here in town. Up north of the lake that by anybody's definition would meet the terms of affordable in terms of the cost and the price. Those are however, not deep restricted, so they don't fall into that, that very well-defined category. So that's, 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 we're at about two point four is the last time, the last numbers I saw. And this is obviously another in our attempts to try to attract affordable housing developments here in the community. Make it more palatable, particularly as it relates to the, 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 the tax piece. Because as we all know, land and property in a community like Guilford is substantially more expensive than a lot of other communities throughout the state. In terms of the, this, the third question you had, or the second one I will answer, is that. The Woodruff property development with Neighbor Works New Horizons has been stalled for the obvious reasons. The state, the state of Connecticut Department of Housing has not yet moved the funding. In fact, Larry, your question is very appropriate. There was only, I think, our last meeting or the meeting before that, that we approved extending the development agreement between the town and Neighbor Works New Horizons. This is, this has already been earmarked by the state as approved, but they just haven't been able to work through the funding mechanisms at this point. And we've also heard that the state looks very favorably upon this project. The commissioner herself worked for Neighbor Works New Horizons on the Apple Lane Affordable Housing Development up off of Long Hill Road. And I have heard a comment that she's thrilled that Guilford is continuing to try to make progress towards our goal. In terms of the first question, I'm punting, I'm going to ask Karen or, or, or Pete to talk about this. And perhaps even Chris could weigh in on this as well.
Yeah, so if you look at the statute, I don't know if you have it in front of you, but affordable housing development means a proposed housing development, which is either assisted housing. Or a set aside development, do you see that?
I don't have it in front of me and I will confess that stating statutes and all that implies that I know more about what I'm talking about than I actually do. And I'm getting my data off the desegregate CT website.
Okay, so basically if there's two different kinds of developments we could work with. One is where you've already applied and gotten funding from the state or HUD. So from Department of Housing or HUD usually. Or you've gotten a tax credit award from the Department of Housing. Another kind of development which could come into town is a market rate development that because you're under ten percent. They can use eight thirty G to make you have this high density development by putting affordable housing units in it. Okay, that's what eight thirty is. It's a, it's a bundle of carrots and sticks to try to get everyone up to ten percent. And the state is trying to enhance those carrots and sticks now. Okay, so if you have a set aside development that you're coming in to propose, you absolutely need to have half of your affordable units at sixty percent or below. But if you have assisted housing, meaning you've already gotten subsidy from the state or federal government, then that requirement does not apply. That require only applies to the definition of set aside developments, which if you happen to go back and look at the statute is the definition number six in the definition section. We fall under definition, or this current project falls under definition three, which is assisted housing, meaning housing which is receiving or will receive financial assistance. Under any government program for construction or substantial rehab of low and moderate housing. And any housing occupied by persons receiving assistance. So if they're getting section eight, okay? So that is why that fifty percent below sixty percent does not apply situation. But this ordinance is simply a platform. Every deal is going to be different. It's going to depend on its funding sources. It may be a set aside development that doesn't have any funding sources, but they're, they're putting a certain number of units in as affordable so that you can't deny the project. So this is just, this abatement is supposed to be basically a clean slate that the town working with developers can write on depending on what. The terms of that particular project are.
Karen, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments or questions on the proposed ordinance?
I would just, I would only add that most housing development, so there's really a distinction between rental housing and homeownership. Our project is homeownership and is a sort of a slightly different animal. It's, it's pretty cut and dry in terms of income versus expenses. Rentals, rentals, a little bit more, there, there are more calculations involved. But also most of the funding sources out there, you know, CHFA and that's Connecticut Housing Finance Authority. And the state will definitely set requirements and benchmarks for affordable versus. Low, moderate income affordable versus moderate income. And so, yeah, I, I would, I can't imagine a project going forward without at least fifty percent of the units being sixty percent, especially as Karen pointed out. If it's a, if it's a state assisted program, which I think Woodruff Farm or Woodruff Property will, will be. So it's a little, it's a little complicated, but I think I like the idea that it's editable and that it can, it's, it can be sort of. Tailored to meet specific needs and circumstances, so.
Well, thank you very much for helping me understand.
You're welcome, Larry. Thank you for the, the questions and the interest. It's rare that we get this level of involvement from the community. So thank you, Larry.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll close the, the public hearing and move on to item three, public forum. Anyone wishing to address the board in public forum on any item on the agenda? Hearing none, let's approve the minutes, January eighteen, twenty twenty two, regular meeting, is there a motion?
Seven.
Any comments, questions, changes, et cetera? I had none. Let me try your minds, Second Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room? Aye. Pose, extensions? Accuse, those motion carries. January nineteenth, twenty twenty two budget workshop, is there a motion? Yeah, the second.
Second.
Second, any comments or questions, changes, et cetera? No, let me try your minds, Second Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, staying, recuses, hearing none, motion carries. We're at three, January twentieth, twenty twenty two, budget workshop. Is there a motion?
Oh, it's the second.
The second, thank you. Any comments, changes, additions? No, hearing none, let me try my, Second Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room, all in favor? Pose, staying, recuses, hearing none, motion carries. I'd like to propose owing to lose timeline this morning to move item number ten. Discuss and take possible action on the twenty two, twenty three budget and five-year capital plan up to item, what we now item five. Is there a motion? Let me try your minds, Second Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Pose, staying, recuses, hearing none, motion carries. As we just approved the, the meeting minutes from a couple of budget workshops. The Board of Selectmen on last Friday, and it came to a preliminary understanding and agreement of where we wanted to go. I want to take the opportunity to thank the department heads and the respective boards and commissions who helped craft the, the budgets. That wound up being presented to us. And I also want to thank the staff, Mary Jane's done, as usual, done a great job of keeping us informed, answering our questions and making very, very valuable suggestions. So thank you all. We, we obviously made some changes to the budgets that were presented to us. I think we cut a couple of hundred thousand dollars out of the operating budget. These are round numbers at this point. We cut pretty close to a million dollars out of the capital, the capital budget as presented for inclusion in. The April referendum. So the budget that's being presented that, that we've agreed is calls for a town operating budget of thirty two million nine hundred forty six. And seventy seven dollars, which represents a five point three, four percent increase. I think it's safe to say none of us were very comfortable with a number that high. But a significant portion, better than a third of that, probably closer to forty percent of that, is coming from increased costs for healthcare. We, like the Board of Education, are faced with the significant challenge this year. So it's a large portion of that, and I reflect is, is reflected by the dramatic increase, nearly a seventeen percent increase in healthcare costs this year. We'll go to great lengths, we're going to have some, you know, opportunities to talk about this with the Board of Finance when we make our presentation and then in, in our various social media outlets. But one of the things that I think has been explained to us is after several years of very positive experiences with our healthcare costs. Largely because we introduced health savings accounts over the past several contract negotiation cycles. So we saw the intended consequences where costs actually dropped for us over a period of a couple of years and probably four or five years. Well, the ability to continue to drop those costs has expired. And now we're starting, this obviously, we're seeing the traditional trends in healthcare, which are anywhere from five to eight to ten percent growth per year. So that's, that's in large measure where so a great deal of pressure. Charlie's also made the point in our meetings that, you know, we've had to invest in human capital to deal with the, the impact of COVID nineteen. So these are, there are costs related to that in this budget. Additionally, in our contract negotiations with one of our unions, the GEA, it was, it had become apparent to us that the wage scales. Were woefully inadequate when compared with other municipalities as well, particularly at the bottom portion of the, the salary structure. So we did some compression of steps and positions. So there's a, there's a, there's a piece in there that also recognizes that we're now paying people a living wage as opposed to being on the margins. So in large measure, I think that's where most of the pressure is on this budget. Welcome my colleagues to comment on where we are.
Well, like you said, the investment in personnel and that's pretty much what's driving this budget situation, whether it be healthcare benefits. Or, or just the investment in people and it's not only, you know, increases, you know, the numbers of people because of the needs of the community. But also a part of what you mentioned was the living wage, the minimum wage. We, we're not quite there yet with the striving towards the fifteen dollars, but I think what is the next, next cycle? I think it's where we'll be for that. So I mean, there's no question that this is a difficult budget in many respects. I know you haven't gotten to, you know, the balancing against the grand list yet. You know, this is an investment both in where the community stands and moving forward. Thank you, Charlie.
I just pretty much agree with Matt and Charles and.
Sorry to take all the air out of them.
No.
I thought budget deliberations were really unusual this time. This is our fifth time in this room. And this is the first time that we've been really dealing with substantial inflation and that our increases and social security increase, you know? So that was on kind of an unusual thing for us to deal with. And the other thing I noticed about budget deliberations were that normally at least one department is bringing forward something new for the betterment of life in Guilford. And we debate pros and cons and the costs and there was really nothing like that.
Nothing real major.
Treading water, surviving COVID, dealing with these things beyond our control, like the health insurance increasing the fact that all the costs are going up. So it was just, it was very different.
Yeah, I agree.
Lou, anything?
Well, I was, I was struck by the fact that both costs and revenue have gone up. Obviously, I mean, not to tread around, everybody's covered already, but obviously the grand list did increase. That allowed us to, to keep these overall numbers. At a point that frankly, budgets have passed in the past. And I, I don't think there's any unnecessary items in here. We went through everything carefully. I, I think it's, it's, it's not optimal in the sense that there's an increase, but it's not inappropriate either.
Thank you, Lou. The, the, Sandy?
No, just, I think, just getting back to the wages and. There are a few new personnel that were long overdue and we knew it would, you know, impact the budget. But there's extreme justification for both, for both where the wages ended up and where the personnel ended up. And as Matt said, there'll be lots of further explanation between now and the budget vote. But I think that the five of us really support where we came out on this, given all the exigencies that others have already said. And we can talk about the debt service, it tends to go down to, to some degree, which, which helped us in the overall.
Agreed. Thank you, Sandy. And I thank you all for your comments. The other portion of the town budget, which is our capital, actually decreases by about four thousand. So we've seen the, you know, it leveled back off at, this is one billion seventy two thousand. We have been aiming to continue to grow that over time. I think this is, it's proven that we don't grow it this year because of the pressures elsewhere in this budget. And then one other thing, debt service, as, as Sandy just mentioned, is decreasing by one point five percent, which is going to help in the long run. Couple of people have mentioned the grand list growth. We had, we're very fortunate to have a grand list growth of somewhere around two point three percent. But once we back out some of the exemptions and set asides for tax appeals, et cetera. I think Mary Jane, we're a little over two percent net effective grand list growth, which produced a significant amount of new, new tax revenues. Prior to us even, even moving forward with a new budget. So just in round numbers, let's get them out there. The net effect with the current education, Board of Education budget as, as presented to the Board of Education by the superintendent. When you combine that budget, which may well be decreased by action of the Board of Education, I believe they meet this evening. So, but right now, when you put all the pieces together, our operating budget, the board's operating budget, capital and debt service with the ground risk growth. We're looking at a two point three five percent tax increase. And, you know, I think we've, we've come through the last couple of months with the historic highs in inflation. I think it's running at seven percent in December, I believe it was. You know, those are, those are stark and dramatic numbers. We're affected by those same inflationary pressures, the cost of goods, supplies, et cetera. So we're falling back to five.
The only other thing I did want to note is that, you know, with this number out there. You know, I did, did want to note that, you know, we have not used our, our assigned fund balance or the medical fund to, to lower this number. We did use those funds for specific purposes, okay? And meet some other obligations, but we have not manipulated. But we have not manipulated the numbers by using those two funds, so.
Good, good, good point, Charlie. Not relying on one time revenue. Just lack of better word.
We've got those funds in an okay position. We're, you know, not allowing them to get too high. So we have been using them for some specific purposes, but not for the specific purpose to present the lower.
Good point, Charlie. Thank you for covering it. Anyone else? No? Well, I'll entertain a motion to approve recommending to the Board of Finance the town's operating budget for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three in the amount of the operating side, thirty two million nine hundred forty six thousand seventy seven dollars. The total capital budget, one million seventy two thousand eight hundred thirty two. And a debt service budget, which is really a shared obligation between the town Board of Education of ten million two hundred sixty four thousand nine hundred one dollars. Is there a motion?
I'm moving.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Let me try your minds, second federating.
Aye.
Those in the room.
Aye.
Close abstaining, recusals, motion carries. I want to thank my colleagues. Again, as you said, this has been an unusual year, but it's and it's the fifth time we've done this. And I'm pretty proud of the fact that five years this board has put forward five unanimous budget recommendations for to the public. So thank you for the spirit of working collegially and cooperatively.
Matt, thanks for reorganizing and everyone, thanks for reorganizing the agenda. I'm I gotta check out.
All right, Lou, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Take care. Okay, what was item five is now item six, Police Chief Butch Hyatt. Six dot one is to consider and take possible action on acceptance of the JAG local VCP grant program and authorize the person to sign all related documents. Good morning, Butch.
Morning, everybody.
Hi.
Want to give us a little background on what some of those acronyms stand for?
Yeah, sure. So the JAG is the Justice Assistance Grant and the VCP is the Violent Crime Prevention. So these grants are to prevent, investigate, to avoid violent crime in communities. They're pass through grants, they're federal grants that are passed through the state down to the municipalities. The last one we participated in was in two thousand and eighteen. They don't, these grants don't always come down to every municipality. Sometimes these violent crime grants are targeted to the bigger cities because of the types of crime they see. But in this instance, this grant was opened up to all municipalities in the state. So we're taking advantage of it with this grant. It's a twenty thousand dollar grant. There's a the the amount of the grant is determined by the Office of Policy and Management in the state, and our number is twenty thousand. So what happens with this grant is they, once it's approved, upon approval, they we we would purchase either training, equipment, things like that. This grant, there's no match or anything on it. So they would pay us half the grant upfront. And then, once we've completed our purchasing or training that we've that we've put into it, they would pay us the second half of it. Typically, that second payment comes on or before September or October first of of this year. So with our grant, we put in for two different areas. One is for equipment. One of the one of the pieces of equipment we put in for is a diesel powered light tower. We actually worked with Charlie and Mike, talked to them. They have a they have a light tower like this right now. It's over twenty years old. We borrow it quite a bit from them. They're very helpful when we need that. And so with that being as old as as it is and us being able to purchase a second light tower under this grant, we would make it available not only to back to the fire department for to to share with them if they needed it, but for any other town departments as well. Light tower, we could use it for things like crime scene. If we had a crime scene outdoor at night, we could use it to light up the crime scene. So the scene could be processed, those types of things. You might have seen these light towers. We've used them down during the Christmas tree lighting, during some of the other events on Halloween, to light up some of the intersections or the areas where people are loading the horse carts. Just makes it much safer for everybody. So that's one of the items that's that's priced at thirteen thousand two hundred dollars for that price or for that item. The second piece in the grant that we're we're looking for is, I think I talked about it a little bit in our in our grant proposals with the police accountability bill, mental health, the the ability to respond appropriately to mental health issues out there, CIT training, which is crisis intervention training is a big piece of that. It's a five day training. We've already sent a number of our officers to that training. This grant would allow us to send between five and eight more officers. So to to that training and cover the replacement costs for them and overtime to go to that training. So thirteen thousand two hundred for the light tower and the remainder of sixty eight hundred to cover the training for the crisis intervention training. And that's all I've got on that.
Thank you, Butch. Questions?
Butch, lots of conditions here left, Jimmy. Second part is, you know, thirty pages of it. I noticed that the last cycle was fiscal year twenty twenty. Without getting into each one of these, you're comfortable with all of these conditions. The only thing I I did notice, it didn't seem like there was much related to the pandemic or COVID as far as conditions. And this might be simply because this is a financial situation, but are you comfortable with all these conditions at this point?
We are, and those conditions are pretty similar to the the JAG grants that we've applied for in the past. As I said, the last one was two thousand and eighteen. We've had other ones prior to that as well. When they make them available to us, we do try to take advantage of it because it does help supplement our, you know, budget and and cost back to the town. So as I said, it's pretty standard in there.
I I was looking for some notation about COVID or something in here, and and I know this is financial, so in some respects, I could see why it wasn't, but I was particularly concerned about our funds and if we were, I just didn't, you know, just want to make sure we weren't jeopardizing other things.
I don't think, I don't believe so.
Okay. That's all I get. Thank you, Charlie. Anybody else? All right, is there a motion to allow the first one to assign all the related documents this great?
Some of them.
Second. And let me try your minds, all in favor? I oppose, same, very non motion carries. Butch, thank you very much. We'll get.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good day.
Then we'll get that signed shortly. Okay, item eight, Environmental Planner Kevin McGee, eight dot one, discuss and take possible action on the move of dead hazardous trees on West Lake Avenue.
Where's Charlie?
Oh, I missed Charlie. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I did. Charlie, number seven. Seven dot one, consider and take possible action on the sale of the nineteen ninety six Salisbury Rescue Truck to Midway Towing for sixty five hundred dollars. Charlie, where's yours?
Morning.
Morning.
The Board of Fire Commissioners unanimously voted to sell the nineteen ninety six Salisbury Rescue and recommendation to the Board to select them to do the same for the amount of sixty five hundred dollars. It's the first time we saw anything major like this for them in twenty one years. The truck's got about four hundred and fifty thousand miles on it. Any questions?
Yeah, just Charlie, Charlie, just want to talk a little bit about the uniqueness of the of midway towing. And as I think we are, we're going to need to make an exception to our typical disposal of equipment relative to auction. So you want to talk a little bit about the brokers you dealt with and what you did to get it to this point?
Yeah, we we had two fire truck brokers come in and attempt to give us a price on the truck and both refused to give us a price. They said the value of the truck is basically scrap value. Midway Towing has been a very strong advocate of the Guilford Fire Department. We had a town in Guilford, but and especially the Fire Department regards to training, providing heavy vehicles, providing free towing service, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it is very good experience with Midway Towing.
And and P, the purchasing or our purchasing and disposal guidelines are exactly that, that we have flexibility to move forward with this specific arrangement.
Yes, let me just make sure. Am I unmuted here?
Yes, you are. You're good. We can hear you.
Okay, so, you know, this is obviously, we try to stick by the purchasing policy, but there is a provision in three dot one dot seven that says the town reserves the right to reject any bids not deemed to be in the best interest of the town or to accept a bid which appears to be in the best interest of the town. So that's whether or not the purchasing policy technically applies. So if if based upon the description, the board believes that accepting this is in the best interest of the town, they certainly can.
Thank you, Pete. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve? Any further discussion? Hearing none, let me try your minds, all in favor? Close abstaining, recusals, hearing none, motion carries. Charlie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Kevin, now we're ready for it. Eight dot one, discuss and take possible action on the move of dead hazardous trees on West Lake Avenue.
So I got thirty five dead or hazardous trees up on West Lake Avenue. As you can see, there's not like one in front of a house, there's multiple in front of each house. They're pretty bad. It's always sounds out really good. A lot of our ash trees, some mixed in with oak trees and a couple maple there. West Lake Avenue is a road which seems to be every single storm seems a tree comes down and seems to take out wires and blocks the roads and stuff there. These trees are located from intersection route one all the way up to roughly Kimberly Drive. So it's a pretty good stretch of road there. Ask for pricing for send out proposals to five of our contractors that are actually on a list to be notified. Receive pricing back from two of them. Actually, excuse me, three of them. Bartlett Tree Experts with a price of twenty one thousand four fifty. Davy Tree with twenty one thousand seven hundred seventy five dollars. And Dallas Tree Landscaping Services, Murphy, twenty five thousand eight twenty five. Bartlett Tree and Davy Tree expect about the same time period for removals of seven to eight days. So their capital pricing would be about the same. So recommend that Bartlett Tree be awarded the contract first order to do this work here. Bartlett is one of our tree services that will help. Does a lot of work with us here. Then competitive pricing with us there. It's actually interesting to see that they the pricing is fairly close here with it. Two fifty or something like that, pretty. We know we're a pretty good range there with pricing.
Is there a motion to?
Oh, second.
Any further comments or questions? I do have one from the comment, which is probably has questions wrapped in it.
Yeah.
Kevin, the details that you have on the enclosed documents we have really are quite helpful. My my understanding, this is this in the O C system?
This is copied. These are notes are going to load D O T then I export it into Excel to make it a more readable document there. But these are notes from my inspection home out there, though, when I see there.
And just as a follow up to this question we had during budget season, how many more of these, how many more pages of these do you have that we have not yet prioritized in the way we have the ones today?
I don't have pages yet in there. There's other roads, like you said, it's looking at there's other roads that have been asked about or I people pushing on Upper Long Hill Road, Lake Drive, Side Street South, Lake Drive there. Some are the bar Musso roads. There still are some hot pockets that were still don't even to put attention to.
But just in the earlier discussion, we talked about budgetary pressures. I think we finally succumbed to your request and granted you the full of your tree budget. But this is just, I just wanted, this is evidence of, you know, kind of the kind of backlog of work that's sitting. So thank you very much.
And it shows you, well, it's very quality for a tree in front of a house. And I know there's one tree there to talk about. Three other trees next to it, or the next door neighbor has a couple of trees there, next thing I know, out here for an afternoon or two. Following up on these trees and these trees on the road.
And it's and it's rare where we get to see, get to utilize, you know, one vendor that take to knock out as many as those, right?
Yeah, once it becomes like a stretch like this, it's it's not a party. Mark, it's easier to get traffic control and everything else there is just to kind of get a whole street done and get one person out there working and bouncing road to road and stuff.
Any other questions or comments? All right, let me try your minds, all in favor? I oppose, same, very not motion carries. Kevin, thank you very much. All right, item nine, Finance Director Mary Jane Malveci and our H R Director Mitch Goldblatt, who's in person, and Mary is remote. And we are just discussing taking take possible action to request the use of funds from medical accounts for the class, the Slim Nation Program for town employees and spouses and recommend to the Board of Education. And when last we met on this topic, we suggested that Mitch and Mary Jane do a little further research based on some of the comments that were made and Mitch, you want to bring us up to speed?
Sure. Since last last meeting, we mentioned last month, made the proposal at that time for Rob Devlin's Slim Nation Program. The board had requested that we look at to see who else in the area might be interested. I reached out to three other places. One did not respond. Two did. The ones that did, you've got in your packets there. And even with response, we have a recommendation still to go with Rob Devlin's Slim Nation. With the proposal, we feel is most apropos to the employees and also has had success with other municipalities in this area. Mary Jane, would you say that you wanted to add at this point?
Not not really. My comments would, I I agree with Mitch. We are requesting that we move forward with Slim Nation. I'd be more apt to answer any questions you have regarding funding.
The question we had in January was maxing it out. I mean, I know that they had estimated how many.
Right.
What would happen if it was so successful that the tire?
I really shouldn't. Well, I think from what we've seen from other other communities and the low numbers that actually took place in the first round, I think that's what's happened. They did, they've done some communities, Milford, Madison, for instance, they've done several rounds with Slim Slim Nation and it picked up and the first round was not overwhelming. I think there's a major commitment on on behalf of the employees that, you know, and some people are already in programs. They don't want to get into another program. This really attract people that are not in any kind of.
You need your own have to come back before this point.
Was that? That's up to you. That'd be up to you. And I think if the if the if the proposal today is to use utilize money from the medical fund, I would say yes, we would have come back to you after and we report back to you what the success has been, what the employee comments have been.
That was also one of the other discussions was the employees' participation, you know, some token upfront if they succeed or complete. Is that considered, no?
It was. And we looked at the other, the other communities that did this were were, one of them found that in in charging a partial amount to the employees, it got A confusing and there was a lot of pushback from employees that said, if you really want to, you know, help my, you know, working for our health, you know, we're already paying mega bucks into our our health plan. We're already paying deductibles. It was a real a real deterrent, even even at a low, like a twenty percent portion of it. So the other towns have abandoned any kind of payment from the employee. So the other towns have abandoned any kind of payment from the employee towards the program. However, in discussing with, with Slim Nation, as well as one of the other people that are, had been on this or looked at, made a proposal this, the feeling was we would not get charged for somebody who dropped out, we only get charged for the the portion of it that they actually provided. In Slim Nation's case, he basically said the dropout rate is like negligible, done. And if it were to happen, it wouldn't charge.
Yeah, if I could, if I could add, Charles, I have to say that when we first started this conversation, I was one hundred percent on board with the employees putting up part of the money for the exactly the same reasons you have outlined. However, as Mitch stated, we, we did come to an agreement with Slim Nation that they would not charge us for people who did not complete the project. Because that was my concern, you know, I, I join, it's not going to cost me anything. Couple of weeks later, I decide it's not for me, I'm out. But we will only be charged for the people who complete the prod, the program. And the, and speaking with the other towns about the difficulties and consequences that they had with charging employees. I, I came around to the same conclusion as our little subcommittee that, that we would go in paying the full cost for the employee and spouse.
Yeah, I think that that makes sense. That's logical and sounds like a good program. I do like the idea of you coming back after the first phase though, just so that we get a feel for money we'll spend, number one, and how much more we want to fund it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and there's, there's, there's no question for that. There's, there's no question there. We would definitely come back, whether you asked us to or not. We, we would not be able to use any additional funding without your approval.
We max out this number or do we pick a number for this first round or?
You know, it's hard to say. If we do that, then there's going to be a cutoff, do we cut people off? I would prefer not to, but you know, I don't, I don't know honestly what it would be. I don't, I don't think so. We're good.
Well, I, I didn't, I didn't hear the question. I'm having trouble hearing you guys.
So you know what, maybe, excuse me one second. I think maybe because this is not, may help. Might help.
Sue, could you, could you repeat?
Sue's, Sue's, Sue's point was maybe we have a sign up period and then we see how many people actually sign up and then come back to the board with, okay, this is the number of people who signed up at five hundred fifty dollars each. Here's, here's the, here's the, here's the total cost. Is that, yeah, right?
Yeah, well, and for sure, we were going to have a sign up period. It was going to be a very short sign up period within a month and, and a cutoff for that. It wasn't something that was going to roll for the next six months. So we, we would definitely have that and we could, you know, time it before one of your meetings so that we'd be sure to have that number.
Why don't we just pick a number? I thought you had a number in back of that January thing. Pick that number and then if you exceed it, you can go back and, you know, guess one or something like that. That's fine. I'm a little uncomfortable with just over that.
Yeah, our, our guest, our guestimate was twenty.
Twenty times five hundred?
Five fifty.
Five fifty.
Ten thousand dollars, right?
Eleven, eleven thousand dollars was the, was the first.
To make sure, put at least that limit on it at this point. You know, and then come back if it's a success, I suppose.
Sure.
So we'll guarantee the first twenty. Yeah, first twenty respond, we guarantee will be participating. And above that, we'll come back for us for, for consideration.
And, and I'd just like to add that since we are using medical funds, I think we need to, in my opinion, I would, would want, do we, we need to go to the Board of Finance to have them approve this as well and, and also our association with the Board of Ed, whether or not they're going to move ahead with it. All comes into play, so not sure where, how you want us to proceed.
The, it's a good point because we had agreed that we would not use medical funds unless all three boards agreed. So twenty may not go very far when you talk about adding opportunity to five hundred degrees on the board of Ed side. So we may need to be prepared to come back and do something different. So I would, I would clearly think that we need to talk to the Board of Ed, let them know that we are doing this program. And then if they want to request a similar type program, it's got to come back through the Board of Finance. But with a courtesy to this board. So it could be bigger, it could be a lot bigger than this, than this number.
The, the twenty prediction was just based on the town employees. I was not taking into consideration Board of Ed, just, just to be clear.
So again, I think somebody said this, this is sort of like a trial program, right?
Yeah.
Going to see how it goes. And if it, if it is successful and employees take to it, it's not a bad use of some of those funds.
Right.
Yeah, I, I just have two additional comments to piggyback on that comment. I, I think that, you know, this would provide for healthier employees. Healthier employees will bring down our medical costs on the long term. So hopefully that would be a win-win for both the employees and the medical fund in general. Also, on the Board of Education did have a similar conversation as we did at the prior meeting. I had been able to let them know that the Board of Selectmen had asked for more additional information, like we're presenting today. So the Board of Ed is expecting to, to hear the outcome of this meeting so that they can then make a call on their side as well. So they, they had similar questions and are looking to see what we're doing here today before they move forward.
Thank you for that. It sounds like we've got a roundabout. Excuse me, John.
May I say something or?
Not at this point, John.
Okay.
At the, at the end, we could certainly talk about it. Just as standard protocol. So we've got, I think, a recommendation that we approve funding for twenty employees in this program. And if the man for this program exceeds twenty, we come, come back to this board for further deliberation and expansion of the project.
Let's put a dollar amount on that twenty's of the.
Eleven thousand, eleven thousand.
Sounds like a motion, Charlie.
Oh, yes.
Any further comments? Let me try your minds. All in favor?
I did have a comment. Thank you for going back and getting some other quotes. I just.
That was your request?
I felt strongly about that and I appreciate your efforts on that and Mary Jakes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're at item ten, consider to take possible action on affordable housing tax incentive ordinance as a result of the earlier public hearing. We still, we still have Pete here. I don't think we have Karen.
Yeah, I'm still here.
There you are, right there, right in the middle of the screen. So too obvious. Yep, Pete's there as well. Okay, based on what we heard earlier today and the revision, are we comfortable moving forward with the ordinance with the following, with the corrections that Karen Kravitz notated in those few sections? Which would be section one to strike excluding utilities. Right, that it should be including utilities as opposed to excluding. All right?
Yes, that's correct.
That's right. And then I think we have two, section two dot six. And to add also including utilities. Is, you think it's essential to, to caveat utilities as not including streaming or broadband services?
Yes, I think so because you are trying to capture what are their essential monthly housing costs and to make sure those are under thirty percent. And I think the public policy would not really require or encourage including entertainment services in those essential monthly housing costs.
I'm going to, Charlie's going the same place I am. I think broadband is becoming not a luxury service anymore. It is an essential service.
Education?
For, yeah, yeah, are, taken for instance, our kids who are home doing remote learning, how, you know, again, how do, how do we accommodate that and particularly in moderate, in moderate or low income housing? Where those, those costs could be somewhat, somewhat exorbitant for broadband services. Is there a way to, is there a way, is there a way to carve something out for, for broadband service, Karen?
But now even streaming, are we talking about putting the meetings on live and everything?
Well, I think what she means streaming services, she's talking about streaming movies and Netflix.
I know, but kids, can you, can't separate those.
Can we just say internet?
Internet access.
Yeah, so.
Karen, can we just use internet access or broad?
Include internet access in the definition of the thirty percent.
Of utilities, yeah.
Yeah, I, as I sit here, I can't think of any reason why not. I just think that we want to stay in line with the funder's definition. So let's say there was somebody that was right on the bubble and the funder's definition doesn't include that and we do include it. The result would be that that person would be counted as affordable for our purpose, as a low income, but not necessarily for the funder's purpose. And I understand what you're saying. I just think that the most important thing is that we stay consistent with what the state and federal governments are defining as affordable for various purposes.
Sorry I have about that. And I can appreciate that by allowing them, we might be ahead of the funding folks. But that, that still doesn't make it wrong. I mean, I, you know. The few people or the people that you say might be on the bubble, we approve them, but the funding folks didn't. I mean, I don't really want to write something for the exceptions. Okay, I, I generally think that internet access in this day and age is just, that's the way we're going. Education.
So I just.
Information, everything else. I just think it's a real part of, of life right now. And, you know, I can appreciate there may be some exceptions and there may be some people on the bubble as you describe it. But, you know, what happens if we have that situation? Are there vehicles for exceptions in the future that, that person exists?
Well, let me just say, this is just for determining whether the person qualifies to live in the unit, number one, which won't be up to us anyway, that will be up to a third party that D O H or the funders will normally require to oversee that kind of thing. And then the other piece of it is whether it will count as an affordable housing unit and that has two implications potentially. And that is, number one, that it might not count toward your ten percent if it's not in conformance with the state and the statutory definition under eight thirty G. And the second is that if the town is inclined to seek any reimbursement from the state for the tax abatements that you're giving, which is an option under the ordinance, then your definition of affordable would have to match that of the state. So you certainly are able to set policy as the town in any way you like. I just want you to be aware of the implications of doing that.
I'm, I'm more comfortable going with Karen's recommendation there. And I'm keeping mine too, we're talking about. Yeah, yeah. And remember, we're talking about housing specifically. So it's really not housing. It's essential for education and so on, but it's.
Try to do something good. Well, I, I have, I have a suspicion that that definition will change. Particularly with the, you know, what's, we've just come out, what we've come out of, that we can't be the only people. I'd like to think we're pretty, we can't be the only people in the country who are facing that same question. Why isn't utilities, why is a broadband service is considered an essential service? Like a utility, like.
And it might be worth a letter to our representatives.
Absolutely. I was thinking your exact thing.
Yeah, let, let them know that, yeah, we're doing it under duress.
Well, I would also say, I would also say that this, the ordinance is drafted such that it moves with the statutes. So if eight two fifteen and eight two sixteen A and eight thirty G are amended, then the ordinance would be amended as well.
I wonder if in the building application process, and I apologize if I'm extending the conversation here too much. But I'm wondering if, because we do have control over the building process and the permitting. If we could require an affordable unit to supply internet access.
It's an interesting question.
We may get a requirement of affordable units in our town. We're in the midst of rewriting the code.
Right, right.
We require sidewalks, we require other things, park路.
Certainly talk, we can certainly talk about that with Chuck Andrews and the board. Bring that up to the planning zone. As well as our new town planner who's going to go on board next week at this time, so. All right. Comfortable moving to four? With the corrections that have been noted?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
And the second, second. Any further discussion or comments? Let me try your minds. All in favor? Close, staying, recusals, hearing none, motion carries. Karen and Pete, thank you very much for humoring us through this process and, and all the work that you've put in on this. Pete, did you have a comment?
Yeah, Matt, I, I just wanted to thank Karen. Karen Kravitz collaborates with, with me on several legal projects in town. And I really appreciate being able to rely on her experience in affordable housing matters. In particular, you can see this is a pretty complicated area and I've been impressed by the, the numerous answers she's been able to provide to me and to Matt and now to you in this field. So I did want to thank her publicly for that.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure working with you, Pete, and with all of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Excellent. Okay. Well, I think, I'm going to say this, this also has some other benefits, right? This is part and parcel of our commitment to doing affordable housing here. This will be notated in our affordable housing plan that needs to be filed per legislative action a while ago, which is currently being developed through the council of governments, which we're doing, we signed on as part of a regional plan for the South Central Regional Council of Governments. Because it was, it was felt by many of the town planners and many in my position not to replicate this thing fifteen times when there are so many things that are, you know, that are regional in nature to address. And, you know, so I think this is, this is.
To address your point about some units existing in town, but not, you know, recorded on their deeds as affordable. How difficult would it be to get a general count? I'm concerned about that number of two and a half percent of whatever, because frankly, we'd never get that. Well, not only that, but that number hasn't moved, I'm going to say in twenty years that I've been aware of it. Back when I was on planning zoning, it was in that two percent range. And, you know, we've built some units since then, you know, granted, it's a percentage of our total housings or our total housing population as well. So the number, you know what I'm saying, Sandy, do you have any of that information in your?
I'm sorry, what was the very first part of your question?
How do we, how do we get those other ones classified?
Well, not so much classified, but just so that we know they're there. So at least if somebody came down on us saying we have such a low percentage, we could say, yeah, but we have all these units over here that don't qualify because they're not deed it, because they were pre.
What we talked about when George would bring up, there were other units that would qualify, but they were not deed restricted. I don't know, that's, we, we have a lot of questions for our new town plan, don't we? I mean, I think, I'm not brushing this off, but we could also talk to Neighbor Works, New Horizons about this or some other experts or David Fink. I mean, it's a question we can bring up. I, I don't have the answer today.
It'd be an interesting number because, you know, like you said, we've been struggling with that percentage number for so long. You know, I just.
It's just that I don't think the state's going to count it unless they're deed restricted.
Well, that's it. I mean, we put some effort in, we've added. Well, that's it. I mean, we put some effort in, we've added affordable housing discussions for as long as I've been involved in town work and you know, the needle's not moving, but it really is moving.
But we have three recognized, at least, at least two projects that we, Chris's project and the town project. I mean, I know it's slow and I'm glad Larry was all asked again about it. And then we have that third development pot potentially on Hubbard Road. So I mean.
That's my point.
That's more than we've had in a while.
But not going forward on the books.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah. But the, the eight thirty G on Hubbard would be interesting. Yeah, we're getting another, we're getting another hundred units, but.
Well, that's why I wanted to know the calculation, because how many units would it take to move the needle?
Yeah, where are we, over nine thousand, ninety-five hundred housing units? So, but you know, ten percent of that would be nine hundred. You know, we're at, we're at two. And by the way, most of the ones that are listed as affordable housing are Sager Hollow.
The three over fifty-fives.
Yeah.
And then there's individual units that are managed by Neighbor Works. Well, now, Neighbor Works New Horizons, those individual units and so, yeah, it's not great. I mean, the two percent is there, but it, I think the needle will move a little if these.
Yeah, I'm just thinking back that, you know, it's been that same number.
Yeah.
Back when I was on planning zoning, that had a long time.
Even, even the advocates, the folks who are, who are pushing the de-segregating Connecticut, they understand fully well that there are areas that affordable housing is going to be very difficult to attain, if ever. All right. One of the things they talk about is minimizing, you know, lots, right, for, you know, four acre plots and north of Gilbert, all right? You know, so still are probably not going to be able to take a four acre plot in North Gilbert, breaking into, you know, smaller units and do density largely because of the septic. And the other thing with affordable housing is that he needs to have access to public transportation, should have access to public transportation and jobs that are, that are with, that are available. So, you know, there, there are places where affordable housing is going to be very, very hard to come by and, you know, even the de-segregating Connecticut people recognize that. So their efforts have been largely to eliminate the artificial barriers where it is easier to do affordable housing. And, you know, parts of Guilford are just not going to lend themselves to affordable housing. But I, I say that fully well knowing you could do a condominium development lake, the one north of the lake. And then what's there, a hundred units up in that area?
Yeah, I think so.
At, at least a hundred units up there. So I actually remember to go back to nineteen seventy-nine. I was working, one of my coworkers bought a unit up there in nineteen seventy-nine. Dating myself. Yeah, I actually helped him put, run speaker wire all through the house. He's a big music guy, so. Anyway. Okay. Next up, appointments and resignations. I'm going to make a preface to this. It was brought to my attention over the weekend by one of our registrars of voters that there may be a challenge with appointing independent party members to boards and commissions, largely because there's a state statute that I think was well intentioned at one point, which was to create a ninety-day moratorium on activity when switching major parties. Okay, so it was brought to my attention that that may well apply. And I shared with Charlie, we were talking about it before the meeting, an email that I received from a registrar with a very specific statute. I reached out to Pete over the, yesterday when I first became aware of this. And I've reached out to a couple of other folks who have some familiarity with these, these matters and issues. And we may well have to reach out to the Secretary of State to determine if that ninety-day window applies to boards and commissions. So Charlie, you have it up there in front of you?
I do, and, you know, it, it does state the boards and commissions, but it also says with this caveat that be appointed as a member of any board or commission that is political in nature or be entitled to the privileges accompanying enrollment in any party for a period of three months. So, you know, I can understand that when it comes to, you know, a town committee or something like that, but boards and commissions that just do the business of the town, they're not supposed to be political in nature. So I, I think there's enough qualifier in there that, you know, any appointments that we have made and or make today, we, we can appoint those folks with the understanding that, you know, determined from whether Secretary of State or from the town attorney, whether or not they actually, you know, serve any meetings until the three months are up. I mean, you're talking two or three meetings anyway. Two or three months. Yeah, so that, that would be my position. And we appoint them with the caveat that we're waiting to decision, whichever way it goes.
They will sit either, they'll be effectively, their appointment will be effective for serving either on the satisfaction of legal issues or the tiny day period, whichever comes first.
So you're basically saying that if we appoint someone today, they can't, I mean, I guess they could attend the meeting as a member of the public, but they can't participate.
My position is where it says, you know, political influence.
Do you have both of your computers logged on at the same time?
Yes.
You're going to have to get rid of one of them in your office, because you're, you're creating echo and feedback.
Specifically says, political, be appointed as a member of any board or commission that is political in nature. I can see that with a town committee, you know, they can't be served on a town committee because that's political.
Right.
But doing towns' businesses is supposed to be political.
Gloria, did you want to comment? You sounded like you were ready to comment.
Yes, yes.
You've got, you've got, you've got to disengage from one of your computers. Thank you.
Okay, I could also come upstairs. But the board's commissions, when they apply, they apply by their party and the simple majority rule applies to boards and commissions. So by, just by that nature, then they, they are appointed.
That is, that is a, that is a, that is a charter provision, not a statutory provision.
Parties that I recognize from that.
Right, Gloria, just, just Gloria for a moment, please. The bare majority rule is not statutory. That is a town charter provision. Pete, if I'm not mistaken, there are, there are, the Board of Alders in New Haven has thirty some odd members. They have maybe one or two are Republican. So, the.
Yeah, there are statutes that require minority representation, but the bare majority rule, which a lot of towns have, but not all, is, is a, you know, an expansion of that. That, that's, you're right, that's by charter. That's not statutory. I mean, if I could address this issue.
Yes, please.
You, you know, I, Matt, as I, just so you know, Matt and I have kind of texted back and forth and emailed back and forth, see if I can get some sort of grip on this for today's meeting, but I really just started looking at it this morning. As far in, in, Charlie, your point is well taken. What is a, a political commissioner board that's political in nature? But I don't have an answer on that, and I'd like to do the research. Political in nature might also just mean one that, you know, has to have a certain number of party members to it. And if it's broadly defined like that, we could have an issue. There's a couple of other things I want to look at. Our, our charter, for instance, requires that it be a, a registered voter and a resident, but doesn't need to be affiliated with any particular party. So here we have people who used to be in one party are now in another. And during this three-month period, for purposes of be, of being appointed, could they be considered unaffiliated with either one of them? But, but there's more to do here. As usual, Connecticut being a small state, we don't have a lot of case law on this. There's a few cases that I want to finish reading, so. You know, in due respect, I, if possible, and I, I don't know what all the ramifications might be, but I would recommend maybe holding the, the two that are in issue. And let me see if I can get a little more certainty. Or at least know if there is an uncertainty.
How about, how about passing it with the condition though?
You could. They can't sit until they're qualified, but, you know, why? I guess is what I'm saying. Why? Maybe it's better to, to think about that after we know, we have a little better lay of the land.
The why would be that they. Yeah, I think the why Pete is that this board feels that they are the most appropriate candidate for, regardless of whether they start serving next week or three months from now. So it's an affirmation.
Lisa and I are here if we could interject something.
Why don't you guys, you want to come upstairs? Because
We can't hear you.
We could barely hear you, so.
Make sure I understand. There was a mention that there are two individuals at issue. Are those people who?
Well, there are, there are more than two. There are more than two. It is only, the registrar, Gloria has only identified two. But we have four today. Let's see, one, two, three, four of them. The two that she had mentioned in there, Robert Harrington, Carol Bailey, Sarah Crusberry, Ted Sands. So apparently a couple of those snuck under the radar, if you would. Other, other, on the part of the registrar.
I see, okay.
And pretty much. Please. Okay. All right, so we're in the middle of this discussion. So this, this was brought to our attention over the weekend. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. It's an issue that obviously needs to be resolved. And your position on this is that boards and commissions are affected by this as well.
I, I believe the state statute says that. And I have also checked with one of the attorneys at SOX
Okay.
to confirm.
And he confirmed, who, was it Ted Bromley?
Yes.
So Ted Bromley has confirmed that it applies to appointed boards and commissions?
Yes.
Is he prepared to put that in a written?
I believe his reply email to me.
Can you just say what the acronym is of SOX, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Secretary of State.
Okay.
So he has written back by email?
Yes.
Pete, would we expect to get something more formalized than an email from the Secretary of State's attorney?
Probably not, probably not. That's pretty good if you can get an email.
Well, we know how to pose the question with the one, with a one-word answer.
Exactly.
As, as I, Lisa and I have been to conferences and they always.
It's, it's when you switch parties, you, the statute's saying you cannot participate in any political ac- activity at all as that new party until the ninety days. And you can't, if you.
Three months.
Right, three months.
That's pretty, that's pretty, that's pretty overarching, because people, people also switch party after they are elected. Is there a carve-out and an exclusion in the state statute?
If they switch parties after they're elected, they cannot participate in that new party. I, I've never heard of that.
I think that's, no, no, no.
We're not talking about primaries, and we're not talking about caucuses. That's what the statute says.
No, but it does say boards and commissions.
Yes. All right.
And, you know, as, as registrars.
Or to commission that is political in nature or entitled to privilege. That's what it.
But by political, it means a political appointment to that board. And like what Peter said, it's the how many seats and how many
Right.
party members are on the board and commission. I'm not, I, we as registrars just presented this information to you as we learn it all the time.
Do you have the question you asked that attorney and his answer?
Uh, yes, I, yeah.
Do you happen to have it with you?
Um, no, if I could. Might take a little bit of time.
Gloria, quick question, if you don't mind, Matt, did I ask?
Yeah, no, no problem.
Was the question specific to any particular board or commission?
No, if a party, if a person changes from one party to the other, when can they participate in the board in the three-month rule?
Yeah.
Not ninety days.
Well, so what it's come down to, and you're right, it's three months, but what it's come down to is, can they be appointed as a member of a board or commission that is political in nature? So that's what I think we're going to need an opinion from Ted Bromley or somebody. Is this board considered political in nature? And I, I can tell you, just quickly, looking at the case law, I haven't.
Okay, I, I do have the email.
All right.
I do have the email. So I asked Ted Bromley, changing from one party to another three-month wait, if they are presently on a board and have changed from, i.e. Republican to independent party, when does that new party affiliation become effective? Then, number two, appointment to a voter who changed from Republican to independent to a commission. I presume the three-month wait is in effect before he can be appointed. And Ted Bromley, in his three-word answer says, three months from the change.
But not, not to any of those specifics, right? He did not mention a specific. Pete, we'll, we're going to craft, Pete, we're going to craft language.
Right.
To have him comment on specifically, so that it answers the specific questions rather than the generalizations that I think were, were that he responded with. That, you know, again, they're, they're very often loath to provide legal interpretations out of the Secretary of State's office. I, I know that that's been an issue sometimes, particularly written opinions. So Pete, I'd like for us to put our heads together with the, with the registrars, of course, in framing the specific questions. And Pete, you were about to mention something about you're looking at case law.
Most of the case law, as you might expect, is about qualifications to circulate a petition for an election or to appear on a ballot for a, for a primary or an election. I haven't found anything that's gotten into the boards or commissions yet, but I, I, I've, you know, I haven't had the time to spend on this yet. Would like to. And yes, I agree, that's a good idea to, let's get a very specific question up to Secretary of State's on this.
You know, to address Lisa's point four. Transferred from one enrollment list to another, or supplied to, or erasure or transfer of his name from an enrollment list shall not be entitled to participate or vote in a caucus or primary of any party.
That's, yes.
I, I think, I think the issue, and Peter had already raised it, the, and we'll, we'll talk about it, is if, if you have a board and there are X amount of seats for one party and X amount for the other, and now you're talking about someone who changed from one to another, the fact that there are designated numbers of seats by party.
There are not designated numbers of seats by party. There are, there's a bare majority rule, which says you cannot have more than a certain number of any one party.
Okay.
It does not say.
So that, that's where the question would be, i- is it political in nature? So that's, okay. So we'll look at it. I agree with Peter. I think we need to look further.
Natural consequences because of my personal involvement. That would mean that all of the votes that I. I mean, that would mean that all of the votes that I cast here since two months ago, you know, are invalid.
Yeah, I I know what Ted wrote back, but I had always presumed that if you change parties, then then you are, you know, valid to keep that party and vote. As you should.
This statute is pretty specific because it talks specifically to participate in the appointment of members that is political in nature or be appointed. You, you're already there. And I'm I'm assuming that even if
We.
Their their reality is consistent with what the posture that's being taken here is that there's a there's a carve out for elected officials. Because they are, but they're that that's that happens regularly throughout the state. People change parties when they're when they're in the middle of a term. And I don't, I've never heard.
Even nationally.
Yeah, yeah, it's it happens federally. You're absolutely right. All right, so I I think we could we could go along those lines. But Pete, I think if I'm getting the the sentiment in the room, we would like to move forward with conditional appointments on some of these, those that would be impacted by. Unless you see a significant reason not to do that.
You know, is there any lawful reason not to do that? I I guess not. I I just, you know, my personal opinion is I try to get the answers before you do it, but.
I I have a concern about conditional appointments as much as I would like to today and believe these people are qualified. And I think they will ultimately get to where we want them to be. But I'm worried if we do it today, and then I'm worried the 90, the the three month rule might be affected. And then it pushes them out further because, you know what I mean, I I just.
Can I?
That's what I'm concerned about.
I would have a suggestion. Ted Bromley usually does respond very quickly. Can the can Peter and Matt and Gloria and I come up with an email to him together this morning?
I don't think it would satisfy the action we're about to take here.
Okay.
All right, I'm sensing there's some uncomfortability with the now now with the.
Well, I well, I I would, I'm not gonna, if if the motion is to do it today, I'm gonna vote yes. I just wanted to make a comment, that's all.
I I have a similar comment. I I'd rather wait. We could have this resolved for our next meeting.
Or before. We could always have a special meeting.
But we could have a special meeting between now and then.
Yeah.
No question about it.
I don't think it requires a special meeting. I understand, you know, people's concern and I would like to get it right the first time too. I just, it just seems so clear to me.
We can, we can do something, I think I may have an inner step. And that is, when we get to the specific items, we can have a general conversation about support for that individual fulfilling that role in the long run. Or just table. The motion that would be our.
Just table.
To appoint them as soon as it became available.
If we table and then they're sitting there on the table.
Yeah.
Yeah. And and once again, I must I must say, we both saw that and questioned that because that's what we have been taught. We've been here for a number of years and.
No, I appreciate your attention. It's it's important. Just as just as it is equally important that we confirm, I think you mentioned this, that you sent any in that one of the emails this morning was, we got a concern about the one of the board members being actually a registered voter.
Yes.
So my assumption is is that you guys also validate their voter and also that they are residents of Guilford.
Yes.
So you guys do that.
Yes.
Validate that they're resident.
Well.
Residents of Guilford.
You mean in the process of appointing someone to a board of commission?
No, in terms of, yeah, well, yeah, I.
I mean.
Any registered voter.
Responsibility, responsibility is to validate that anyone who is appointed.
No, I think the nominating chairs take care of that. I know Steve does. He's he often asks me, can you see if this person?
The problem with that, that circumvents the ability of unaffiliated or independent people to not participate in party. Many independents or unaffiliated don't want to be part of it.
Right, but they're unaffiliated goes to the first selectman's office. And then they can call us and make sure they are a registered voter. We don't see those names before it gets.
Right, so so it sounds, well, I think it sounds like you need to validate when folks signed up for, you know, changing for switching.
I mean, each party would do that. That's not a problem.
Anyone who applies directly to the Board of Selectment for a position or a commission, there's no check or balance there as to whether or not they are actually a voter or a or even a resident.
That that would be easy for us to do if you had a list or a name or at any time it.
Is it a requirement that somebody has to be a voter and a resident?
Yeah.
Yeah, a resident, but do they have to be a voter or just a taxpayer?
There's always a voter.
Pete, for participation in board or commission member, it has to be a voter or just a taxpayer?
A tax. Red, not registered voter and resident.
Right.
That's what I thought.
And and don't forget the letter that is sent out by our office. There's a line in there said when the party privilege is gained by that voter.
So unaffiliated, always encourage unaffiliated to participate in boards and commissions. So what we are now saying, not announcing what we have been saying for a while, is that that's not necessarily valid. I mean, if somebody is unaffiliated, how are you gonna prove? Or have we proven that they're voters?
I think I think that's the process we need to put in place because if they're coming directly to us, someone in my office, our office needs to communicate with these folks and validate that they are. So we can even put a check and council.
That they have voted.
I agree with you.
Well, that they are.
They're on a part.
That they are a registered voter.
Registered voter.
Right. Does it matter if they vote or not?
True.
We do have a list.
Candidates in trouble over the last couple of years.
Oh, and even local, okay.
All right, so so a note to self, we're unaffiliated voters or anybody comes directly to the Board of Selectmen, we need to put a process in place to validate that A, they haven't switched parties within 90 days. B.
Well, we don't know that yet.
Well, no, that that's gonna be one of the things we're gonna have to determine.
Right.
Somebody can change the party, we need, that that's up to us. Inasmuch as we're relying on the nominating committees or the respective parties to do the vetting on their own candidates, it probably suggests that we need to vet them all.
Yeah. Put a line on the form for it, then at least.
Right.
The registrars are here to help, so we're.
I appreciate that. So, you know, probably will behoove us to send you a list.
Yes.
When we put the agenda. And what their party affiliation is and if they have switched.
They're gaining party privilege.
Entire list today.
There's too many, there's there's too many here. I've already, I've already gone through the list based on the applications.
I think I only saw two.
There were actually four. Yeah.
And and yes, but they they were from unaffiliated.
Okay, so the unaffiliateds.
The only two, sorry, can I speak?
Yeah.
The only two is number 16 and 17. The other ones were unaffiliated.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, has has it come to your attention that we've made appointments through the past months? That they also be impacted?
I looked at the the last board of selectmen and there were none on there that.
Check the, check the previous meeting because there were, there were.
You mean two before?
Can I see your list for a minute? We also had one, and I'm gonna tell you what number. Who was number eight? Was had approached me because they were considering having property in another state.
Yeah.
And asked if he could be on a board of commission. And I I had told him he couldn't. If that was, if he was registered.
Number eight?
It's question is where is he declaring residence?
Right, so, okay.
So that's number eight?
Okay, yes.
Another state.
Okay.
I don't.
No, but we know where to visit.
Okay, so I I'd like to point the ones that are that are not in question here. And Now Joe Nugent is an unaffiliated voter. I don't suspect he's switched parties at this point.
I looked it up this morning, so.
All right, Pete, we'll put our heads together. After we need to figure out how to specifically ask the questions to to get to the heart of the question, which is what is? I think it comes down to political in nature, definition of political in nature. Now, here's a, here's another question that we'll need to wrestle with. If in fact, we have already done something that is potentially prohibited by this state statute by appointing someone who has switched parties within that timeframe. Does that invalidate it? Do we have to take action to reverse it? And what if that individual has already participated in a meeting and voted? Does that invalidate the any actions that were taken by that board? Because it might have been improperly constituted if this this bears out to be the interpretation at the end of the day.
So when I did.
Did faster answer, maybe.
Right.
Look at the specifics.
So the last board of selectmen, there weren't any names that would be of concern here. I didn't go.
Unless they changed afterwards, but I was pretty sure that we appointed Ralph Babasor.
He was unaffiliated.
He was unaffiliated? About Nathan Scott.
What's the last name?
Nathan Scott.
I I don't have.
But we appointed him to a task force, not a border commission. I think there's a significant distinction there.
Yes.
All right, those are, those are the two that I was familiar with, and I'll look back, but let's go, let's go. All right, have we beaten this up enough?
Thank you.
Okay. 11 dot one, act on a recommendation to move Gregory Browder from alternate to regular member of the Golf Course Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire on September 30th.
So moved.
Second, second, let me try your minds all in favor. Two, act on a recommendation of appointing Goodrich as an alternate to the zoning board of appeals to fill a vacancy.
I'd like to make that motion, so moved.
Second it, good, all in favor? Item three, act on a recommendation of appoint Metin, and it's a spelling correction here. I come from my credit, credit document. It is Metin, M E T I N, Costco to the Guilford Lakes Golf Course Commission to fill a vacancy for term to expire on September 30th, 2024. I'd like to make that recommendation. Is there a second? Let me try your minds all in favor. Four, item four, act on a recommendation of appoint Ralph Casey as an alternate to the Public Works Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire May 31st, 2024. Is there a motion? I'll make it, second, second, any, any, no, call the question, all in favor? Eleven dot five, act on a recommendation of appoint Charles Tendally. Roll authority to fill a vacancy for a term to expire July 30th.
So moved.
And the second, second, let me try your minds, all in favor? I think we can expect to see a repeat visit from the WPCA folks and Sonia Marino once that board gets fully constituted.
Sure, sure.
11 dot six, act on a recommendation of appoint Morgan Herry to the Board of Fire Commissioners to fill a vacancy for a term to expire October 16th, 2025. I'd like to make that recommendation.
I'd like to second it.
You'd like to second it for thinking for all of you for the same reasons?
Yeah.
Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries and I think it's a, should be, it should be discussed. This is a young woman in her mid 30s, I believe, who grew up in town.
Yeah.
Moved back to town to raise her family and is getting involved early on. 11 dot seven, act on a recommendation to appoint Rose Robinson as an alternate to Historic District Commission for a term to expire in January 31st, 2027. I'd like to make that recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
11 dot eight, act on a recommendation to reappoint Gary McKelney to the Land Acquisition Commission for a term to expire on January 31st, 2026.
I will go.
And second.
Second.
Second, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 11 dot nine, act on a recommendation to reappoint Scott Williams to Conservation Commission and as a conservation commission representative to the Inland Wetlands Commission and Land Acquisition Commission for a term to expire January 28th, 2026.
So moved.
Second. Okay, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
11, act on a recommendation to reappoint Joe Nugent to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire. It's not a lie, okay? Act on a recommendation to reappoint Doug Clark to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire on February 28th, 2026. Is there a motion?
Second.
And second, try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
11, act on a recommendation to reappoint Joe Nugent to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire on February 28th, 2026. I'd make that recommendation. Is there a second? Shall we try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
12, act on a recommendation to appoint Eva Desmond to the Inland Wetlands Commission for a term to expire February 28th, 2026. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, and second, let me try your minds, all in favor? 13, act on a recommendation to appoint Ben Robinson as the Economic Development Commission representative to the Land Acquisition Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire April 30th, 2022.
Like to make that motion, please.
No, I'll second it, I'll second it owing to the fact that he is a son of a very good friend of yours.
He's my friend.
And actually, actually, he's turning, turning into a pretty good youth basketball coach. Referee the third grade basketball league this year. He's got a very good team. Let me try your minds.
Aye.
Aye, all right, so we are, item 14 is to act on the appointment of Robert Harrington as an alternate to the Inland Wetlands Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire on February 28th, 2024. Made, I'll second it, is, and let me try your minds, all in favor? Item 15, act on the appointment of Carol Bailey to the Inland Wetlands Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire on February 28th, 2026.
Second.
Second from, thank you. Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item 16 is to act on the appointment of Sarah Schubert to Inland Wetlands Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire on February 28th, 2024. I'm not gonna make a motion to do so, but I am gonna make a motion to suggest that this board supports the appointment of Sarah Schubert to the Inland Wetlands Commission at the time, at a time to be determined, once we've satisfied the legal review.
Absolutely.
Second. Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
And the same wording will be used for Ted Sands as an appointment to a proposition on the Planning and Zoning Committee. Same language.
Same language.
And seconded.
We just have to note that, well, I don't know, is the typo been changed, alternate?
Yeah, well, I think it's, we're back to this, so.
Good, okay.
Yeah, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Item 18, act on reappointment of Amanda Papawell as an alternate to the Board of Assessment Appeals to fill a vacancy for a term to expire on February 1st, 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. By this setting, the others are again, well. There is one thing that's remarkable about this. We have never had this many appointments at any one board or commission meeting. But what is remarkable is the renewed interest in the community on people serving. Particularly on some of the boards and commissions that typically wind up with a lot of vacancies on them for months, if not years. And I'm thinking inland wetlands, WPCA, so the renewed interest in serving is certainly welcome. At least to me. Item 12, request for the use of town property. 12 dot one would be act on a request from the Christ Episcopal Church to use the green and to place a sign on the green advertising against Dance Dialogue for Eco Justice taking place April 24th, 2022. Signing placement, April 10th through the 24th. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Yes, second.
I don't know what I'm moving, but I don't know what it actually is.
It sounds interesting. Dance Dialogue for Eco Justice. All right, let me try your minds, all in favor? 12 dot two, act on a request for the Shavat in the Shoreline to use the green to place a sign on the green advertising against Jewish festival taking place August 14th, 2022, signing placement, July 31st to August 14th. Is there a motion? And a second? Second, let me try your minds, all in favor.
Aye.
Those abstaining, because there's no motion carries. 12 dot three, act on a request on the Parks and Recreation to use the green April 9th, 2022 for its extravaganza, rain day, April 16th. Is there a motion? Oh, the second.
Second.
Try your minds, all in favor.
Aye.
12 dot four, act on a request for Parks and Recreation to use July 9th for its community band concert and July 24th, August 7th, 14th, 21st, and 28th for its summer concerts. Also requesting approval for rain dates of September 4, 11, and 25. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Can't wait.
You have. Let me try your minds, all in favor.
Aye.
Those abstaining, because there's no motion carries. Item five, act on a request from the Guilford Garden Club to use Rollwood Park for its plant sale taking place May 14th, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And the second.
Second.
Let me try your minds, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Committee reports, I'm not sure there's anything we've talked about the winter property and affordable housing, whatever your, your board is. Correspondents? New business, anybody have any new business?
We do.
I think we are under new business.
Well, yeah, that's right, we do have, we do have.
Okay.
Go back to my other, my other agenda.
So we are here about redistricting.
Yep.
And the, the state realigned the 98th, which is lower Guilford, as opposed to the 86th. I believe we're, we don't need approval for that redistricting because it's mandated by state, but that little part, so now the, the division, which is really easy in Guilford, is Route 80. Where before it was a little, little sliver of, well, 700 voters south of Route 80, which are now going to go to Baldwin.
So these were voters that were formerly in?
In District Four.
District Four, which is at the John School, what?
Yes.
Are now going to be members of District Three?
Two. So you each got this little memo saying District Four was 3196 voters and it will be 2361.
And that's the only change we're making at this point?
You mean, true.
Well, that's the only, that's the only change that.
We're letting you know that that's happening.
That, that's the only change that we had to do something about because it comes from the state.
Got it.
But, but we also like to make a few other moves. We, we were, we are trying to lessen the load at the firehouse. And so we had, came up, we did some research and came up with a proposed plan to move some people from the firehouse to District One and some, and some people from the firehouse to District Two. And do we have the map?
Yeah, Matt, watch this.
Okay.
Change the screen there? The.
Kevin was fabulous and.
What am I going to?
In doing, making maps for us.
Thank you.
Heard of somebody.
It's changed.
With more expertise in shaping.
Kevin has been such a help. I don't know what, we would not have been able to do this without him. So, so first of all, the, talking about District Four, that, where the state changed the border.
I'm not sure that, that battery's back.
Do you want to talk? Are you okay? Interrupt me anytime. So what Kevin did is create a map, an original, and then did an overlay of the changes. So the green area at the top was all District Four and the little area below, that's Route 80, that major boundary, and the area that's in pink over the blue, that little pink, he's going to point, thank you, Kevin.
I'll come into it for you there.
That's the area that used, that has, is currently in District Four that the state has taken out of District Four. So where we didn't have a choice but to move them, and we are moving them to Baldwin. Baldwin is probably the next, the closest, closer in some instances, and has the space.
And we did use Google Map as far as how to, with the distance between going to Jones and Baldwin, and it's usually exactly the same.
So that's, that's what we knew we had to move, and, and I think there was one little part.
Of Lake Side that we are moving to Two only because Lakeside was even odd. And it was crazy, and, you know, just say Lakeside.
Right, where Kevin's pointing to.
Yeah, with the serious, the darker green, I think the darker green is one of the best move from North Guilford District to downtown or.
To the firehouse.
To, to Baldwin.
Underlaid by pink, it's going to Baldwin. It's underlaid by blue here, now it's going to the firehouse.
Right.
Yes, except for Twin Bridge.
Twin Bridge, there's a couple of little houses in here on Twin Bridge, which.
So we'll still go, we'll go, still go to Baldwin because they have a straight route up and over.
So Kevin, all that blue is because that's, there, there are no houses there, that's all.
All that's here is, is Timberland's property, and Timberland is tied to 200 North Madison Road, which is a golf course address there.
So, but there is that little sliver on Twidbridge that goes to Baldwin.
There's a couple of houses right through here on the hand is there.
Okay, because.
It's like that chunk of pink is sitting there in the middle of blue, but it's really, if you look over the house.
Yeah, right, yeah.
It makes sense, okay.
Right, so that, that's kind of, we, is a given. I don't think there would be any other wiser choice than to move them to Baldwin. And then, and then again, we have had a lot of people at the firehouse. They had more than most other districts. And we've had some issues with traffic, with, with, we're using a smaller area of the firehouse because the firehouse needed that, some space for themselves. So we wanted to lighten that district and we.
The firehouse is now at 3761. And hopefully it will be at 2888.
So we moved, Kevin, can you slide that?
Yeah, what do you want to see?
The lower part.
The lower part. The orange.
So on the, on the sheet that I gave you, if you have the one that says move from District Three to District One, the, I don't know who has it and who doesn't, but we, we took two groups of, two neighborhoods, two areas from Three and moved them in, from the firehouse and moved them to Calvin Lee, which is also off the main route. That'll help alleviate some traffic. And we feel that they have, they can handle it. So we are moving essentially about 1,000 voters from the firehouse to Calvin Lee. And the, so Calvin Lee is the orange and the firehouse was the blue. And you see where Kevin shaded orange over blue. Those are the areas that, that we want to move to Calvin Lee. It's largely from the Goose Lane, Teener Marsh area and the Podunk, Orkut area.
And once again, we use Google Maps and, you know, the, the number of minutes is about the same. And, you know, as you could see, just the flow going south instead of crossing over would, is an easier.
Yeah, and they, they, both those neighborhoods have the major roads that will cut right down to Route One and then to Lee.
So Lee is going to jump by 1,000 registered voters.
Yes.
And you reduce the fire, one by about 900.
Right. So. The.
Lee can handle that.
It has a big gym and a lot of parking. As you know, the soccer is in back of there.
And what happens to this, the school is not in session that day?
No, no schools are.
Or is it a professional development day?
Usually for the presidential election. But don't forget, we have other schools. We have Baldwin and Melissa Jones and Cox that we use.
No, I know, but I mean, they have a smaller number of people going there. I just question 4,000 potential people showing up at the school. I guess, just seems like a lot.
Was part of the process checking with the superintendent's office for any concerns?
We had not done that yet. That's a good idea. We have had concerns expressed by Charlie Herschatter at the firehouse. That's been a big conversation for a few years.
That has been a difficult place to get in and out of anyway. There's limited parking and it's right off of Big Drive.
Yeah, that's where I vote. And to tell you the truth, if you're trying to make a left turn on 77, then it's like.
Right. So.
Yeah.
So we are, per the state, we, we can have five, up to 5,000 people at any polling place.
No, I don't think there's, you could have, I don't know if there's a limit, but. Other towns have other higher numbers.
Gloria did research with other towns, so I think we gave you that too. And we are under, we have less voters at, even at what would be Lee than other towns have at their elementary schools. Well, do you? The, Leet would end up with 4,000, Baldwin 3,900. Fire Headquarters would now go down to 2888. Jones will, will now be very small, 2361, and Cox has 3128.
And there's no change at Cox.
What we're talking about is making Leet the highest number of.
Leet and Baldwin.
Leet and, yeah.
Which isn't really.
All that's going from 3200 to 39.
I mean, 4, 4,000 is still, let me.
Leet is going to be the highest. I think you got to talk to the superintendent. The only reason, right now, one of the initial reasons is, is that it's a daycare facility. Sometimes that facility is closed and they, they pretty much just lost. And that's a little street. I think you got to think this through a little bit.
Well, let me tell you the, the other area towns. Madison has, let's see, 12,000. Madison has about 13,000 and they have two polling places. North Branford has about 11,000 and one of their polling places has 5,100 people in there. And it, it's usually schools. I mean, if you think about 1,000 more voters at Baldwin and at Lee, you know, throughout the whole day, you know, they're not going to come, mostly come in the morning or dinnertime.
We're open for what?
6:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
So 14 hours, additional 80 cars per hour if it's evenly distributed. Generally, it's not, but. And actually, Lee is an interesting district. A lot of daytime voting at Lee, always has been.
Daytime, I'm sorry.
Midday, midday voting is always seen to be high, at least when I, they're standing.
I mean, I think as we progress, usually November, the, the. Board of Ed has been either having a staff development or not having that. It would just be the referendum, and of course, the primaries are in summertimes.
Yeah, so, so really, we're talking about statewide town, and then town, you know, town elections where turnout gets somewhat higher, federal and state are usually pretty high. The impact on referendum voting is nominal since, you know, we're lucky to get 15 to 17% of the voters show up. So that impact is not going to be there. But I agree, I think we should at least have a conversation with superintendents. We don't have to act on this reapportionment today.
Right. Well, we do need to act on.
Yeah, there's another issue that I think we can go about.
Okay.
We ran it to talk to you.
The one up north, as somebody said, we don't have a choice with that. That is just being done, that's being.
So it's really, we're saying we, we are moving most of those people to Baldwin, that's our plan. And, but we don't have a choice in moving them. It's just a question of where.
But I think we'd rather do everything together than, you know, do relocate Jones voters and then do the next step. I don't even know if we can do that separately.
Yeah, I think if you can get the superintendent and, and the Board of Ed shortly, we'll approve the, approve the move. Two weeks from now.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
You know, not only is your superintendent, you've got to pull your traffic off of, you know, the main state road or the neighboring road, maybe we should be talking. Definitely will reach out.
You know, I, I used to go to Lee for soccer games, and I know how crowded it is to get in and out of there. But I, I think it's, you know, it can be done.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt to check it.
Yeah, okay, is there, do you want us to check or is something we'll do together or?
We'll see.
Yeah.
We'll do it, we'll do it. Okay, we'll talk. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin.
I'll look for him. John, come on up.
Hi, good, thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
No, thank you. My name's John Cavallaro. I am the owner of Orange Theory Fitness in Guilford, Route One next to CVS. I want to say first, thank you for the opportunity to present or bid a proposal to the Agenda Item Eight. I think it became Nine on Health and Wellness. So very much appreciate that. The only thing I was going to say was, one was a nuance, is if we so received a program like that, it would create local jobs, employee love, Guilford residents, it would create more. And the only thought or, or option I would put out to the team is maybe, I love what you're doing for town employees, both the typical talent and the teachers. And we have many current and past members from both audiences. I think it would be neat if there is an option at some point in the future to give those employees an option of what they'd like to do. So Orange Theory is more about a physical movement thing, and we do have dieting programs. We actually work with Weight Watchers. You can get free, if you join Orange Theory, you get free Weight Watchers entry. So national leading provider in nutrition and dieting. And I think with a program like this, it's always challenging to get participation. But I think if employees had options, that would really go a long way towards driving, I think, the desired result. More active, more fit, more healthier, more energized, more engaged community. And one of the unique things Orange Theory does is they could actually do it together. So people in the same departments or same groups or same schools could take classes together, do it together. And you know, when you have a support network, it makes it better. And then obviously, we would allow spouses, friends and family, things of that nature. So I just thought I'd put that out there for consideration if there was a further round or expansion of the round. We'd love to help further serve the community.
John, thank you for, for, A, responding to the invitation. I appreciate it. Personal disclaimer here, I was a member of Orange Theory as I got myself back into shape a couple of years ago and dropped a lot of weight. And John has been generous with the town employees already. He was offering, I think it was the three free classes to, to try it out. And we, we did that early on and I think I took advantage of that same offer. It's a unique, it's a unique training experience. So I think Mitch and his team, take a look and see if we can expand these kind of things. Clearly, doing it with somebody who's in town, a business that's in town, is something that's of great interest to me. And we'll see what's good with it together and for consideration.
Are you still currently offering something to Guilford employees?
Yes, I can, we, we tend, I try to offer what the best available options are. Corporate does a lot of marketing, so there are times when they offer more on top of what we traditionally would. So whenever something fresh comes along, I do that. We, we always have a freestanding. You can take a class free because you get people to try it. But right now, I could create something special for the town to give. it, um, but right now, I could create something special for the town to give more, so at one point, the town, uh, corporate was offering a free month to everybody, which is a great value, so that's, like, how do you not try that? Um, for us, people who typically try it, do it, the, the reason people don't is usually the cost, and that's why I thought, if, if there's any level of subsidization or free months, members usually go, just jump on it, because they recognize the, uh, the benefit. Uh, but yes, it will be a program, one thing that's unique is, United Healthcare, um, is now offering for any of their members who are sixty five and older, they're offering two free classes of Orange Theory a week, incredible benefit if you're a United Healthcare as your insurance provider, uh, so it means anyone can do it, is one of my points, I think a lot of people go, hey, it's, it's this gym, it looks, um, uh, challenging, not sure I can do it, it's really built for anybody, yes, I, I would love an opportunity to package, uh, another special package for the town.
Excellent. John also, John also, he and his team participated in, uh, the event we had on the green, uh, this year, and, uh, appreciate your.
My pleasure, new green, typical cop, all the local races, all, you know, our pleasure, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, I'm sorry, that's.
Oh, I, it was, it was just great, it was a great learning experience, so.
Would you like to be on a board or commission?
Yes, yes.
Uh, just don't switch party, leave.
Oh, thank you.
Anyone else further for, from the, uh, viewing audience? Uh, hearing none, um, is there a motion to, to executive, what, uh, executive session?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, uh, we're, we're gonna actually, we have an executive session for two purposes, um, the first of which is the agreement between the town of Guilford and the Guilford Firefighters International Association, happy to be having that conversation, and then the other one would be for land acquisition, so, is there a motion to, to, uh, executive session?
So moved.
A second?
Second, sorry.
Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so, uh, invite me in? Yes, I'm inviting, uh, Mitch, there's.
Appreciate it.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to meet you.
Come on.
Oh my gosh, you're having so. Does your motion come out of executive session?
So moved.
Wait a second?
Second.
Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, in executive session, uh, there were, uh, no motions made, no actions taken, however, there was discussion on two items, uh, the first of which was, uh, uh, the agreement between the town of Guilford and the Guilford Firefighters International Association of Firefighters for a contract effective July first, twenty twenty one, extending to June thirtieth of twenty twenty five, um, is there a motion to approve and authorize, uh, a signature? So moved. Second?
Second.
I just want to take the opportunity, thank Charles, uh, as well as Mitch and Chris Hodgson for a prolonged, but eventually successful negotiation, um, I think Mitch, uh, said earlier this, uh, this past twenty two to three, or something, or whatever the number